Good evening, I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, November 18th, and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join the city council and me in the presence of the leaders?
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Patrick McCalhoun. Excuse me if I butchered that, but thank you for being with us, Lieutenant. I'll call on the city manager for his update.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few things tonight. One is WISTA night service has returned. So they've implemented night service as of November the 11th, allowing more residents to rely on public transit for late-night work shifts, events, and safe, convenient travel across Winston-Salem. The extended hours of operations across several major routes provides reliable transportation access beyond standard business hours. These sales can be found on our website, on their website. Just as, and I mentioned this two weeks ago, but from, on terms of public input opportunities, there are several opportunities for residents to help the city plan for the future through surveys that are currently online. In the strategic planning area, the Budget and Performance Management Department has provided residents with an opportunity to give their input on priorities for the next two to four years regarding city services and community investments, and that survey is available on our website. And the Metropolitan Transportation Plan 2050 Plan is to help shape the future of transportation in our community, or that plan is for that. Residents are asked to give their feedback on key priorities and proposed improvements, and again, they can go on our city website to find the link to that survey. In terms of, since our last committee, our last council meeting, there was a request for us to talk to the community, so I'd like to ask Chantel McLam, who is our Director of Neighborhood Services, to come up for a minute and talk about the meetings that were held last week for developers, organizations, and the public to learn more about the process of purchasing, purchasing city-owned land for affordable housing development.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, members of City Council, Chantel McLam, Neighborhood Services Director. So we had the opportunity to hold two public meetings last week, one virtual on Wednesday, which we streamed live on YouTube. The participants were allowed to submit questions regarding, I gave a short presentation and they were able to submit questions regarding the process. We had 29 active viewers at the time, we had 32 chats, and since the video's been posted, we've had 158 total views. We also had an in-person meeting on last Thursday at Haynes Hosiery, where we had 30 participants to sign in, and we had a diverse audience of developers, nonprofits, nonprofits, and residents that were interested in the process. I believe we received a lot of good questions, a lot of good feedback, a lot of good positive feedback, and I was able to give some clarity to the process.
We also had another meeting.
It was...
I was able to sit in with a, a meeting with the mayor and some concerned citizens as well, that provided some good feedback and input on the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Several more events, items that are coming up, on Tuesday, November the 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Winston-Salem Police Department is hosting a recruitment, open house, and tour at the Public Safety Center located at 725 North Cherry Street, for prospective applicants to explore and learn about rewarding careers, paths within the police department. It offers a rare opportunity to meet the chief and our dedicated team while touring key facilities like the Real-Time Crime Center, 911 Communications Center, and Criminal Investigations Division. I should say it is for recruits, not just for the general public, so we're hoping that people are interested in policing and will come to that. Our Recreation and Parks Department is offering two Everything But The Turkey Bingo events. Tuesday, I might have to go to this one, too. Tuesday, November 19th, at 1:00 p.m. at the Brown and Douglas Active Adult Center, and on Saturday, November 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. at the Carl Russell Community Center. Prizes include Thanksgiving side dishes, desserts, decorations, and turkey vouchers. And then for our, our younger folks, the Recreation and Parks Department is offering a youth basketball league for young folks between the ages of five and 12, starting December the 3rd. So registration is now open through November 22nd, so go to weplay.winstonws to register for the program. And then just a couple of notes of congratulations for tonight. One to Courtney Driver, our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities Director, who was awarded the Golden Manhole Award earlier this month at the North Carolina One Water Annual Conference. The Golden Manhole Award is given to individuals who have made significant contributions to the advancement of the system's design, education, training, certification, construction operations, maintenance, and management of water distribution and wastewater collection systems. And maybe since she's won it, we'll get it to change it from manhole to person hole or something. And then on the, another one for, to Scott, Tasha and the Budget and Performance Management Department, they, this week, learned that they had received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This, this award recognizes the city's commitment to transparency and fiscal planning best practices. The budget document must meet criteria and excels as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communications tool. This recognition underscores the hard work done by the staff in the Budget and Performance Management Department, including contributions from all of our other city departments as well, and demonstrating our commitment to financial and performance management excellence. So that will stand ready to answer any questions.
Mrs. Pete. Great, thank you, Mrs. Pete. We do have five honorarios tonight that we're happy to present, and so, Madam Clerk, if you read the first one, please.
Item H1, Resolution Honoring Stephen "Pat" Ivy for His Service to the City of Winston-Salem. Whereas Stephen "Pat" Ivy began his career with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on May 31st, 1986, as an engineering associate, and whereas Pat was promoted to the positions of Highway Engineer 1 and Highway Engineer 3, before being named Transportation Engineer Manager 1 at Division 7. And whereas, on May 27th, 2000, Pat was promoted to the esteemed role as Division Engineer for NC DOT's Division 9, where the city of Winston-Salem is the largest municipality. And whereas, during his time as Division 9 Engineer, Pat has demonstrated exceptional leadership and provided outstanding customer service to all communities in the greater Division 9 area. And whereas, Pat has gained the respect of community leaders and elected officials for his diligent service and creative problem solving. And whereas, Pat has provided visionary project development and management oversight for many transformative projects in the city of Winston-Salem, such as Haynes Mall Boulevard widening, Salem Creek Connector, US 158 widening, US 421, and Peace Haven Road interchange, and the Winston-Salem Northern Beltway. And whereas, Pat led the modernization of I-40 business, which was built in the late 1950s as North Carolina's first segment of interstate highway, providing access to the heart of downtown Winston-Salem. And whereas, the project replaced non-critical vehicular bridges and added two signature pedestrian bridges, expanding the multimodal infrastructure serving downtown Winston-Salem. And whereas, the project boasted unprecedented public outreach and coordination, culminating with the 2021 Grand Prize for America's Transportation Awards. And whereas, during Pat's tenure as Division 9 Engineer, he was over, he has overseen more than 200 projects totaling more than $2 billion throughout the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. And whereas, the projects completed under Pat's leadership have improved the transportation system and the quality of life for city residents, resulting in a positive, long-lasting impact on our community. And whereas, Pat's leadership has been critical in developing meaningful partnerships with the community agencies and the city of Winston-Salem that will foster continued success for transportation initiatives throughout the region. And whereas, Pat's 38-plus years of service to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, including 24-plus years as Division 9 Engineer, have been filled with countless accomplishments and unwavering commitment to public service and a legacy of outstanding leadership. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby honor and recognize Stephen P. Ivy for his exemplary record of service and professionalism to the cities, citizens of Winston-Salem. We extend sincere appreciation to him for that service and wish him health and happiness in his future endeavors.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody's wanting to make the motion, but Councilmember Taylor, second, by Mayor Protem Adams, all those in favor, the motion, please say aye.
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 I know no one's opposed to this, so Pat, will you join me at the podium?
Pat! Pat! Well, Pat, I can tell, you can tell that we all respect all that you've done for us. This resolution is great, it lays out all those projects, but you know what the best way is, we just drive around town and see all the projects that you made happen, Salem Parkway, and we will always remember you've made Winston-Salem a much, much better place. You're a great attitude, and we all work very closely together, so Pat, best wishes in your retirement, and you'd like to say a word there.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this honor. I, I do appreciate it. I have been very blessed over the last 24 years to serve as your Division Engineer. When I was transferred to Winston-Salem back in 2000, I had no idea what to expect, but I will tell you from, literally from day one, it has been one of the highest honors of my life. I think about the partnership that we have developed with the council, other elected leaders, between the division staff and the wonderful staff with the Winston-Salem Department of Transportation. We have been able to accomplish great things. We have many things still on the list, and, and I know that the staff that we have at the division, once I leave, will take it from there and take it to the next level, and will continue with that tremendous level of service that, that we have built together. So I just again want to say thank you, it has truly been a pleasure. I'm not going anywhere while I'm retiring from DOT. I will be working in the private sector, still in the transportation arena, so I'm looking forward to that, and I'm sure that we will see you again in the future. But again, thank you so much, this is a tremendous honor, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. We have the next resolution, please.
Item H2, Resolution Expressing Appreciation to the Honorable Jeff McIntosh.
Today we celebrate the dedicated service of Councilmember Jeff McIntosh, who has served the Northwest Ward with vision, determination, and a strong commitment to progress. As he steps down from his role as city council member, we reflect on the incredible impact he's made across Winston-Salem. Councilmember McIntosh championed extensive renovations at Haynes Park, overseeing two phases of improvements that have revitalized this beloved community space. Understanding the power of collaboration, he played a key role in merging SciWorks with the Children's Museum, creating Colladium and helping bring it downtown, a true hub of learning and exploration for families.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
He was a champion for the development of Marshall Park, another keystone in downtown development. His focus on enhancing public spaces didn't stop there. He worked tirelessly on completing Second Street Park and restoring historic Spring Park, all while securing critical funding for the Cross-Nor Land Deal. Transportation and accessibility have also been central to his vision. He supported the conversion of First and Second Streets to two-way traffic in Holly Avenue. As Chair of the Public Works Committee and Member of the Finance Committee, Jeff made substantial strides to increase the city's budget allocation for essential maintenance, enhancing the quality of life for all residents. He also secured more funding for the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, contributing to a vibrant downtown community. Thank you, Councilmember Jeff McIntosh.
Yeah!
Resolution Expressing Appreciation to the Honorable Jeff McIntosh for His Service as Councilmember. Whereas, Mr. Jeff McIntosh has served as a council member for the city of Winston-Salem since December 2013, representing the Northwest Ward. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh earned a Bachelor of Arts in Economics from Wake Forest University in 1980, and acquired a North Carolina real estate license in 1985. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh has been a strong advocate for sound public policy, serving in key roles such as Chair of the Public Works Committee, Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and as a Member of the Finance Committee. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh played a key role in securing the final funding for the 92-acre conservation easement on the Cross-Nor land, helping to secure the largest urban green space in Winston-Salem for future generations. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh advocated for the renovations of several parks, including Haynes Park, Second Street Park, and Spring Park. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh tirelessly championed the construction of Marshall Park in downtown Winston-Salem, which was completed in April of 2023. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh served on the Colladium Board and played a significant role in the merger of SciWorks and the Children's Museum into Colladium, which opened in downtown facility in 2023. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh's knowledge and experience in real estate development has proven invaluable as the city considered complex real estate projects to ensure that the city and the residents were well-protected as a financial package was structured. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh has served on the Board of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and previously on the Board of Preserve Historic Forsyth, while also serving as President of the Holly Avenue Neighborhood Association, where he facilitated traffic changes on Holly Avenue. And whereas, Councilmember McIntosh has provided valuable leadership in advocating for affordable housing, completion of public works capital projects, improved policies for street resurfacing, historic preservation, progressive planning policies, and refocusing city efforts on public transit. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby honor and express great appreciation to Councilmember Jeff McIntosh for his dedicated public service, his engaged involvement with the Winston-Salem community, and his commitment to a well-being of all, of all its residents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second, by Councilmember Clark, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right, yeah!
Jeff, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Winston-Salem, we thank you for your service to the city and your great leadership, and you've made a special place on this council, we're gonna miss you and wish you the best.
Thank you, thank you.
Neighbor!
I've been told my, I've been told my best speeches are my rarely short ones, so I'm gonna keep to that. As I said earlier in the other room, very few things that I've done as council have been things that I've done alone, most are done with the support of staff and my other council members and the mayor, so I want to thank everybody that I've worked with over the 11 years I've been on council, and I think I'm leaving the council in good hands, so keep up the good work. I'm still gonna be in the community, so look forward to seeing you all over the, in the future. Thank you.
Item, please.
Item H3, Resolution Expressing Appreciation to the Honorable John Larson.
As Councilmember John Larson wraps up his time on city council, the South Ward has seen transformation. Thanks to his vision and leadership over the years, he has worked tirelessly to improve the lives of his constituents and preserve the character of the neighborhoods he holds dear. One of his major accomplishments was securing a $13 million investment in Old Salem. This funding helped revitalize the area with upgraded street lighting, enhanced stormwater management, new trees, and smooth paved roads, ensuring Old Salem remains a vibrant and welcoming destination for residents and visitors alike. He also spearheaded the renovation of the Old Salem Strollway, a key connector through this historic district. His commitment to recreation and parks was evident in his efforts to breathe new life into community spaces. He led renovations to Washington Park, Hobby Park, and Granville Park, while also ensuring that Parkland Swimming Pool opened, providing a vital resource for families in the area. Safety was a top priority as well. Fire Station 13 opened in May of 2023. This new facility not only ensured faster response times, but also strengthened the city's ability to protect its growing communities, in an effort to preserve and promote Winston-Salem's rich history. Councilmember Larson was instrumental in acquiring the former federal bankruptcy building to house the Muse Museum. This future museum will showcase the city's cultural heritage and serve as a center for education and community engagement, a champion for our veterans. He worked tirelessly to make Veterans Day a recognized city holiday. He fought consistently to protect the unique character of South Ward communities, ensuring that development respected the needs of residents while also creating opportunities for growth. Thank you, John Larson, for your unwavering commitment to our community. Your work has made Winston-Salem a better place for all.
Hang on, we're gonna read the resolution.
Whereas, Mr. John C. Larson began serving the South Ward as a city council member in December 2016, and diligently served in this capacity for eight years. And whereas, Councilmember Larson attended the University of South Carolina, where he earned a bachelor's and master's degrees in history. And whereas, Councilmember Larson served as a captain in the United States Army from 1972 to 1975, and championed the city's recognition of Veterans Day as an official city holiday. And whereas, Councilmember Larson has served on various committees, including the Peter Oliver Pavilion Committee, Public Works Committee, Southeast Gateway Planning Committee, Business 40 Design Committee, Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Piedmont Triad Regional Council, Creative Corridor Board, and Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful. And whereas, Councilmember Larson was a strong advocate for sustainability and was instrumental in the reactivation of the Sustainability Committee. And whereas, Councilmember Larson also served on the Old Salem Area Security Council, WSFC Historic Properties Commission, Wacoia Historical Society, and Moravian Archives Board. And whereas, Councilmember Larson has strongly supported Old Salem, accomplishing substantial upgrades to the Old Salem infrastructure, renovation of the Old Salem Strollway, and advocating for the Molly Light Crossing at Salem Creek. And whereas, Councilmember Larson has worked consistently to protect neighborhoods and enhance parks. His efforts include renovations to Washington Park, Hobby Park, and Granville Park, and helped establish a micro park in the Conoc neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby honor and express great appreciation for Councilmember John C. Larson for his dedicated public service, his engaged involvement with the Winston-Salem community, and his commitment to the well-being of all its residents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cipio, second by Councilmember Taylor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. On behalf of the council and the citizens of Winston-Salem, we greatly thank you for your service to the city of Winston-Salem, to the city council, and many years of service to this community, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you, sir. Sit down. Sit down for just a moment. My legs don't listen to what my mind says, it's sort of common, everybody's saying these days, you can talk all you want, but nobody's gonna listen to you anymore. I thank you for this award, for this recognition, as Jeff McIntosh says, it's not me that's getting recognized, it's the team of the city that's allowing this to happen. Long before I came on city council, I worked with people in planning, and people in sanitation, and people in streets to create some special place of Old Salem. And now, now on city council, I've been able to do some more with the same people in a different way, sort of way. And I appreciate Planning Department and Sanitation, Public Works, and the Police Department, the Fire Department, and go on and on, the attention that they've given us. We have a great city here. Just look around, know how, you don't have to look far to see what we accomplished here that not being accomplished elsewhere in the state. And it's something, it's something I think we can all take proud in, pride in, as we walk around, drive around this city, and know what a wonderful place we have here. And I appreciate the contribution that each of you is making, simply by coming out tonight for, as an example, of how much you care about what's going on here. So thank you very much for all that you do, and I appreciate the, the recognition that I'm receiving tonight. Thank you.
Item H4.
Item H4, Resolution Expressing Appreciation to the Honorable Kevin Mundy.
As the Southwest Ward bids farewell to one of its most dedicated city council members, we look back on the lasting impact Kevin Mundy has made during his years of service. Councilmember Mundy made history as Winston-Salem's first openly LGBTQ-plus city council member, paving the way for inclusivity and equal rights for all. One of his proudest achievements was championing the passage of the city's nondiscrimination ordinance, a landmark effort to ensure protection and dignity for... His efforts include renovations to Washington Park, Hobby Park, and Granville Park, and helped establish a micro park in the Conoc neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem hereby honor and express great appreciation for Councilmember John C. Larson for his dedicated public service, his engaged involvement with the Winston-Salem community, and his commitment to the well-being of all its residents.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sipio, second by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. On behalf of the council and the citizens of Winston-Salem, we greatly thank you for your service to the City of Winston-Salem, the City Council, and many years of service to this community, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you, sir. Sit down. Sit down for just a moment. My legs don't listen to what my mind says. It's sort of common. Everybody's saying these days, you can talk all you want, but nobody's looking to listen to you anymore. I thank you for this award and this recognition. As Jeff McIntosh says, it's not me that's being recognized, it's the team of the city allowing this to happen. Long before I came on city council, I worked with people in planning and people in sanitation and people in streets to create some special place of Old Salem. And now on city council, I've been able to do some more with the same people in a different sort of way. And I appreciate Planning Department and sanitation, Public Works, and the Police Department, the Fire Department, and go on and on, the attention that they've given us. We have a great city here. Just look around, you don't have to look far to see what we accomplished here and not being accomplished elsewhere in the state. And it's something I think we can all take pride in and pride in as we walk around, drive around this city, and know what a wonderful place we have here. And I appreciate the contribution that each of you is making simply by coming out tonight for, as an example, of how much you care about what's going on here. So thank you very much for all that you do, and I appreciate the recognition that I'm receiving tonight. Thank you.
Item H4, resolution expressing appreciation to the Honorable Kevin Mundy.
As the Southwest Ward bids farewell to one of its most dedicated city council members, we look back on the lasting impact Kevin Mundy has made during his years of service. Councilmember Mundy made history as Winston-Salem's first openly LGBTQ plus city council member, paving the way for inclusivity and equal rights for all. One of his proudest achievements was championing the passage of the city's non-discrimination ordinance, a landmark effort to ensure protection and dignity for every resident, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Under his leadership, the city embraced a greener future, the Natural Landscape Ordinance. He helped develop, encourages the creation of pollinator gardens and native plantings, promoting both environmental sustainability and aesthetic beauty. His commitment to green energy was clear in both policy and action. He not only supported renewable energy initiatives, but also led by example using zero emission vehicles in the annual Winston-Salem Holiday Parade, furthering the city's efforts to reduce its carbon footprint and build a more sustainable future. In Ardmore, he facilitated direct conversations between local residents, the Winston-Salem Police Department, and the DOT, addressing traffic concerns leading to vital pedestrian safety improvements throughout the area. Councilmember Mundy's time on city council has been defined by a passion for service, a commitment to sustainability, and a dedication to making Winston-Salem a better, more inclusive place for all. Thank you, Councilmember Mundy, for your leadership, your advocacy, and your unwavering dedication to the people of Winston-Salem.
Whereas Mr. Kevin Mundy began serving the Southwest Ward as a council member for the City of Winston-Salem in December of 2020 and served in this capacity for four years. And whereas Councilmember Mundy has been a resident of Winston-Salem since 1987 and is a native of Aiken, South Carolina. Whereas Councilmember Mundy earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in government and Spanish from Wilford College and an international MBA from the University of South Carolina. And whereas Councilmember Mundy was notably the first openly LGBTQ plus member of the city council, playing a key role in developing a citywide non-discrimination ordinance to protect the rights of diverse communities. And whereas Councilmember Mundy diligently worked with various development partners to bring affordable housing initiatives to the Southwest Ward. And whereas Councilmember Mundy has served as a member of the Public Safety Committee and in that role worked with DOT and the Winston-Salem Police Department to establish a direct dialogue about traffic safety concerns, resulting in multiple pedestrian safety enhancements in the Ardmore community. And whereas Councilmember Mundy has served as an advocate for green energy, taking steps to improve the city's efforts to decrease its carbon footprint by using zero carbon emissions transportation for the annual Winston-Salem Holiday Parade. And whereas Councilmember Mundy has also represented the City of Winston-Salem by serving as a board member of the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, Caladium, and Part, and an advisor and city liaison to Pride Winston-Salem. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem hereby honor and express great appreciation to Councilmember Kevin Mundy for his dedicated public service, his engaged involvement with the Winston-Salem community, and his commitment to the well-being of all its residents.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Adams, second by Councilmember Sipio. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Service, even though it's only been one term, you've made a big difference for our community, led us in a good direction many times, and we appreciate your great service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can say it's been an honor, and I can say it's been one of the most educational experiences of my life. I came into this job thinking I knew everything about Winston-Salem, and I was wrong. There are always challenges, there are things we don't know, but my colleagues here and the staff here have made me, helped me learn so many things that I could be of service to the citizens in the Southwest Ward and throughout the city. But one thing that hasn't changed in four years, we have a lot of opportunity, we have a lot of obstacles, and we have a lot of resources that we can bring to bear. So everyone work together to make that happen, please.
Item H5, please.
Item H5, resolution honoring City Attorney Angela Ingram-Carman. Whereas Winston-Salem City Attorney Angela Ingram-Carman is retiring December 31, 2024 after nearly 36 years of service to the city. And whereas Ms. Carmen received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Howard University in 1984, graduating as a member of Phi Beta Kappa, and her Juris Doctorate from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill in 1987. And whereas Ms. Carmen joined the City of Winston-Salem as an Assistant City Attorney in 1988, where she provided her expertise in matters involving human resources, code enforcement, and nuisance abatement. And whereas in 2008, Ms. Carmen was named City Attorney, becoming the first African-American and female City Attorney for the City of Winston-Salem. And whereas under Carmen's leadership, the City Attorney's Office helped the city obtain legislation, including but not limited to affordable housing for the sale of city-owned lots, local economic development, minimum housing code enforcement, and abandoned vehicles. She and her staff have prepared thousands of contracts, including but not limited to downtown development agreements like that with Mass General, reimbursement agreements like that with Wake Forest University Health Sciences, and economic development agreements providing city council-approved incentives and clawbacks like that with Caterpillar, Bunzl, Nellapack, and Tex Tech. Under her leadership, the City Attorney's Office has filed on behalf of the city a number of lawsuits, including but not limited to Chapter 19 nuisance abatement lawsuits, and successfully defended the city in countless litigation matters, including but not limited to the lawsuit brought by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. And whereas Ms. Carmen has been an active member of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorneys, having served on its Board of Directors and on the Association's Legislative Action Committee, and having been the recipient of the Ball Bluestein Award for her valuable contributions to the field of municipal law in 2024. In 1987, Ms. Carmen received the Commissioner's Award in recognition of her accomplishments as a former resident of properties owned or managed by the Housing Authority of the City of Winston-Salem. She was also recognized as one of Black Business Inc.'s Power 100 honorees in 2024. Ms. Carmen has served on the United Way's Women Leadership Council and has spoken at events to enrich other municipal attorneys. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Winston-Salem hereby honor Ms. Angela Ingram-Carman and express their deepest gratitude for her years of dedicated service to the citizens of Winston-Salem, and wish her much luck and happiness in her well-deserved retirement.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. So moved by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Taylor. Mayor Protem was going to do that, but she was crying, she couldn't do it. So all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Kept us out of trouble, kept us going in the right direction always, so make sure we do anything.
Angela! Angela!
I will try not to cry. Thank you all, Mayor Protem and City Council, for allowing me to serve first as an Assistant City Attorney for the City of Winston-Salem, then as City Attorney, as Chief Legal Counsel for the city. As most of you all know, my journey from Main Street in Kimberly, and I'm...
Hey!
Was very intentional. I first became, I guess, introduced to the City of Winston-Salem through the city's Human Relations Department back then, and became engaged with a wonderful group of folks, city employees. And as I've come to oversee or see over the years, the city employees here are just as wonderful today as they were back then. You have a great group of employees to be proud of. I'm also proud of my staff, many of whom are here. I'd like for them to stand up. All that I have accomplished for the City of Winston-Salem has been through the support of my staff and other city employees. One thing I can promise you all, come January 1st of 2025, you will no longer receive 2:00 a.m. emails from me, or legal updates in the middle of the night. It truly has been an honor to serve as your city attorney, and I will miss you all. While I will not go far, and you may see me on occasion, I trust that I am leaving you with a staff that's well-prepared. And based upon the announcement that's to occur with G5, I am happy that you all have chosen my replacement and who that person will be. So thank you all again. It's been wonderful.
Are you the one that'll keep me up? Ain't you?
Okay, so tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by, in this case, the committee of the whole of the city council. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to remove from the consent agenda?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. And second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's approved, our consent agenda is approved. We'll now go back to the general agenda, which includes the implementation of an affordable housing development program, public hearings on economic development project, the proposed comprehensive plan forward 2045, a zoning petition, and a resolution to appoint a new city attorney. When public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. On the zoning case, if there is opposition to the public hearing item, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak on these items, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, as well as on the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. As I say, every meeting copies of our agenda, as well as videos. Previous meetings are always available online on the city's website, and just click on the watch meetings online option. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, consideration of items related to guidelines and implementation of the Affordable Housing Development Program, resolution authorizing implementations of the Affordable Housing Development Program and guidelines, and an ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
Thank you. As you recall, this item received a motion of no consideration at the last meeting. Therefore, the procedure would be that we would entertain a motion to approve this. So move.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Burke.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this item until the new council is seated in January and until that January 21st meeting.
Your second?
Second for discussion.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please say aye. Raise your hand, please. Those opposed to the substitute motion, opposed to the substitute motion now, should raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, I see five in favor, I mean, opposing the substitute motion and three in favor, so the substitute motion fails. Back to the original motion now. All those in favor of the original motion to approve the plan, please indicate by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes, seven in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Item G2.
Item G2, public hearing and consideration of economic development assistance for Hanesbrand Inc. pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1.
Thank you, Mr. Millet. Could you give us a brief comment on this proposed project?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Joints, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council.
Good evening.
As you know, Hanesbrand, Hanesbrands announced that it is moving its global headquarters to the Park Building at 101 North Cherry Street downtown. This move is expected to involve 500 employees with an annual payroll of $40 million, as well as an investment of $6 million to outfit the office space. This project will stimulate the local economy, promote businesses, especially those downtown, and ensure that Hanesbrands remains a viable part of Winston-Salem economy. Prior to this announcement, excuse me, prior to the announcement of their move downtown, there were informal discussions between the city and Hanesbrands officials about a potential workforce retention incentive. The proposed economic development performance-based incentive totals up to $208,050 over five years, which represents 50% of the estimated sales tax revenue from the $40 million payroll over five years. In return, Hanesbrands agrees to provide continuing employment for 500 employees for at least five years, and where possible, create additional jobs, keep its headquarters in downtown Winston-Salem, continue operating in Winston-Salem for a minimum of seven years, invest or cause to be invested $6 million in outfits to the headquarters, and maintain a minimum payroll of $40 million.
Any questions, Mr. Millet? Seeing that when this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed economic development incentive item? Seeing that when I declare the public hearing closed, and, I'm sorry, oh, Councilmember McIntosh.
To ask Mr. Millet just to run through the mechanism by which the subsidy is being paid and paid back, because the public understands that this is not coming from property tax dollars.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. The incentive payment will be made annually as early as July, but it will not be paid until the previous year's property taxes have been paid. They are paying the property taxes before we make any disbursement of the incentive.
Care is repeating. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Millet, could you again talk about the movement of Hanes from the Northeast Ward or out off of Germanton 8, and who's taking their place and how all of that works so that the citizens will have an idea that people are not vacating buildings just to move to better and leaving them as vacant?
Right. Thank you, Mayor Protem Adams. The former, or I guess it's current as of today, headquarters of Hanesbrands has been sold to Carolina University, who had a campus downtown. That Carolina University campus has then been sold to a nonprofit educational institute. So all of the buildings, this is not leaving any vacant, excuse me, any buildings unused. All buildings are remaining in use.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you, Mr. Millet. Again, this is public hearing. I think I closed it already. I would entertain a motion from Councilmember Clark.
I move for approval of G2.
Second. Motion second, McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, Councilmember Clark. Councilmembers, I need to circle back to our consent agenda. I'd forgotten that item C5 needed to be pulled from the agenda for further consideration and work by the staff. Let me have a motion, if I could, to rescind our vote on item C5. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Mundy. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. We have just rescinded the action on C5, and that will come back at a future time. All right, we'll have the next item, please.
Item G3, public hearing and consideration of a resolution adopting the proposed Forward 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Community Development Housing General Government Committee recommends unanimous approval.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy's going to tee this one out for us, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. I do want to provide a little bit of oversight behind the Forward 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Assistant Planning Director Amy Crum will provide the details related to the actual plan, the process, the outreach, the visions, goals, and objectives, and implementation items. But I do want to provide a little bit of broad context overview as far as what a comprehensive plan is. It is a broad policy document. It's aspirational. It's aspirational. It is to guide future growth and development in communities, large communities such as ours. The comprehensive plan normally focuses solely on land use and land use policy, growth management policies, future changes to UDO text amendments, potential rezonings, and things such as that. It is, the comprehensive plan in and of itself does have tentacles that will reach into the council's future capital improvement program, sustainability plan, climate mitigation plan, housing plan, sustainability plan, transportation plan, you get the idea. But it's not those things. It is, again, broad, and it aims to achieve consensus related to the overall city and county policies regarding land use, zoning, and growth management. And you notice, I did say city and county. This is a city and county plan. We are a city and county planning agency, so we have to strike a balance between the desires of what the city might want and what the desires of the county might want, trying to look at the elected officials, the planning board, the citizenry. So, again, we're trying to strike a balance with our plan and our planning documents. Almost all of the recommendations that come out of this plan will ultimately require elected body public hearings, public participation process, et cetera, in order to implement the plan. Again, text amendments, other area plans, other planning-type documents, again, transportation plans, et cetera. All of those will come back to either this body, or to the county commissioners, or in some cases, both. Approving Forward 2045 thus allows us, your staff, to work on those specifics through our future work programs, future area plans, text amendments, your upcoming strategic plan, et cetera. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to adopt this plan so we can move forward on those other items. I would be remiss if I didn't thank those that participated in this plan. We did have over 4,000 different citizen engagements on this plan, and I also need to thank the city-county planning board, our staff, but especially Assistant Planning Director Amy Crum, and principal planners Kelly Bennett and Tiffany White for all of their hard work on this plan. It was a total team effort, but they kind of led the charge on this. They have been the primary architects on writing this plan, taking the information, synthesizing it. We did receive over 4,000 comments on the plan, taking that and synthesizing it down into a usable document that's easy to understand. We don't have a 300-page document this time, 400-page document with planners speak. We've got a 94, 96-page document. And all of their hard work is very much appreciated by me. I know it's appreciated by our planning board. I think it will be appreciated by you as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy, who will go over some of the more specifics. So, thank you.
Mr. Crum?
Good evening, Mayor Johns, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, members of council, Amy Crum, Assistant Planning Director. So, Chris Murphy obviously touched on this, but I'm just going to reiterate it again. A comprehensive plan is the official public document that guides growth and development. I want to stress the word "guide," as Chris mentioned. It is not regulatory, it does not have teeth per se, but it guides us on our decisions that we make to the future and how we, the types of plans and policies, items that we do. It is community-driven, and it is a vision, so it's very high-level. It does not get into specificity on exactly how we do certain things, but it does touch the broad base. I like to refer to it as sort of a roadmap, stating that we are at point A, we want to be at point B in the future, and give some general ideas of how to get there, but the actual directions that we take and the route that we take is determined after the plan is adopted. It serves as a foundation for other documents to come next. Those documents will contain the specificity, like the area plans that go into parcel-specific recommendations, topic-based plans that get into the specific recommendations for that particular item, such as walkable Winston-Salem, which is the pedestrian plan that gets in specifics about sidewalks and intersection improvements, the greenway plan, and any other types of policies or plans that we are directed to do. We are guided by the state, and we have a state statute that requires us to have a regularly maintained and updated comprehensive plan. So, I'm going to go very briefly through this, but this process has been underway for about three years now, and we started this process back in 2021, really as we start all our processes with research. We looked into development trends, statistical data, both on a local level, but also regionally and nationally. We looked at what other peer communities are doing regarding comprehensive planning, how comprehensive plans have been done across the country, all to sort of get an idea of what we wanted within our plan. As Chris mentioned, this is a short document compared to our last planning efforts. It's only like 94 pages, and that's by choice. We wanted this plan to be accessible for anybody, no matter their background, can be able to pick up the plan and read it and understand where we're heading. So, that was very intentional that we did. And then moving into fall of 2022 is really when we started to market the plan through community engagement. We went to community events that were already scheduled to happen, namely, in this case, the fair was the first one we went to, to sort of start advertising the plan, letting folks know that this is happening, and that to gain some initial feedback, but also to gain contact information so they can participate in the process. And that carried on all through up until last summer, or last fall, really, that we went to community events. Starting in the spring of 2023, actually in April 2023, we went live with a website for the plan, forward2045.com, and we also had an online survey where folks could provide some initial input. And that survey ran from April to November of 2023. We also started holding meetings with our public commission, boards and commissions to get their input, as well as stakeholder meetings, which I'll talk about in a minute, as well as meetings with community organizations. In October, we started holding public input meetings, and that went through to spring of 2024. We took all of that information in spring 2024 and over this past summer and drafted the plan. And then we held four more public meetings in July and August to just get input based off those goals and strategies that we drafted. And that brings us to where we are today. I want to spend some time talking about public outreach, because it was a little bit different this time around than what we've done in the past. We really wanted to have a sort of broad-based public outreach sort of in participation protocol or plan. And we wanted multiple opportunities to participate. We wanted to go where the people were. Instead of having them come to us, we wanted to go to them. We wanted to use the technology that was, the best technology that was available to us today to gather input. And we also wanted to give everyone an equal voice, so that not one group sort of controlled the narrative, that everyone could have an equal voice and say and what of the input that was provided. So, with that, like I mentioned, we had an online survey. We had over 2,900 survey participants, and for folks who are statistically-minded, that equals out to be a 1.8% margin error and 95% level of confidence based off Forsyth County's total population. So, really strive to get a consensus on what the results were coming out of that survey. We have received over 4,000 written comments on the survey alone. We went to 16 different community events. This was the fair, the Walker Town Fall Festival, Apple Festival, Earth Day Fair, things like that, farmers' markets. We had nine stakeholder meetings, and we had basically eight stakeholder groups, and these were for groups associated with things like arts and appearance, mobility and access, food and food access, DEI, institution and employers. These were the stakeholder groups. We had eight of them, and we had a wrap-up meeting at the end. If you couldn't make your group's meeting, you could come to the wrap-up meeting. And that had 72 participants, but the key factor here is that those 72 participants represented 62 different community organizations, agencies, and groups or institutions, and they included the Kenan Institute, the University of North Carolina School of the Arts, Wake Forest University, Winston-Salem State University, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, Solutions for Independence, Senior Services, Age-Ruling Forsyth, Second Harvest Food Bank, Rescue Mission, Shalom Projects, and plus many more. So, we really wanted to go to those organizations and let them tell us what they're hearing from their constituents and get that feedback. We also had 20 public input meetings, and we also wanted to reach out to teens and the youth, and so we actually met with the College Advisory Board as one of our meetings, the Youth Advisory Board. And then we did, we worked with the Recreation and Parks Department to work with their teen programs they had over the summer for 11- to 14-year-olds and gathering some of their input and getting them to start thinking about planning and how they see their community, as well as we did a children's booklet. We have the website, and that's had over 10,000, actually over 11,000 today, site visits. And all of this information that we have gathered, all the public comments, is available on that website for anyone to view and peruse as they wanted to. And then we also did a sort of a broad-based marketing campaign using TV, radio, social media, billboards, and that has had over a million impressions. And this is just a map showing you where we held those meetings. So, the orange dots are community events, the blue dots are public input meetings, and the teen outreach is the green, and just show you how we tried to sort of disperse those across the county. One thing just to note about Forsyth County and that we need to consider when we were drafting the plan is that we are number four out of 100 counties in population, we are number 60 in size. So, we have a high population, small size, and based off current zoning patterns and development patterns, we're about 75% built out. We knew going into this plan that housing and economic development were going to be two key issues. The survey agreed with us and confirmed that, but we also heard through the survey that land preservation was also a really key factor. And so, we asked people and citizens during our October, November 2023 meetings, how they would rank those, to give us some insight of how we sort of tackle these competing interests. And land preservation was number one, not by landslide, but it was number one, followed by housing and then economic development. And that told us that we need to be thinking creatively about how to meet housing needs, how to create job growth, while, so you have the opportunity for land preservation. Land preservation is not the number-one goal of this plan, just want to stress that, we've heard that before, but it's not. It's just that by hearing this, we know that we need to be creative in how we address these other issues to allow for land preservation even be an option on the table. So, through all this input, we developed sort of five vision themes for the future. And it's, in 2045, Forsyth County, Winston-Salem, will have attainable housing and stable neighborhoods, strong economic opportunities, connected and accessible spaces, a vibrant character and identity, and a sustainable and healthy environment. And this is really the backbone framework of this plan. It's really very much centered around these five vision themes. And through the collective implementation of these themes, Forsyth County and Winston-Salem will have managed growth and land use. When going through this and through the survey, we noted that equity, livability, and resiliency were key items that came out of that survey. But when you look at equity, livability, and resiliency, they are implemented through things like housing, job growth, access to goods and services and amenities, amenities themselves, clean air, those sorts of things. And so, we felt that those three items were guiding principles for the vision themes. And so, every goal and strategy within this plan achieves one of these three guiding I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but I just wanted to go through the different goals. I will say that the goals are not in any particular order. Goal one is not more important than goal five, they're all important. So, for attainable housing, you're looking at topics such as housing choice and availability, affordable housing, neighborhoods, and then housing and security. For strong economic opportunities, the goals cover topics such as recruitment and retention of companies, making sure we have a good supply of business and industrial sites, economic mobility through job training and workforce development, and supporting our local economy and our agricultural economy. For connected and accessible spaces, there's three key themes here, first one being transportation, both in terms of active transportation, walking and biking, transit, as well as connectivity within the transportation network. The second would be safety, and the third would be access, both physical access, but also access to goods and service through things like the digital divide and internet use. For vibrant character and identity, you're looking at appearance of our public spaces and public works, preservation of tree canopy and green spaces, public art and historic preservation. And then for sustainable and healthy environment, the goals relate to climate change mitigation, access to clean air and water, protection of our local ecology and land, and then food access and food economy. And for managed growth and land use, this contains our growth management plan, which I'll talk about in a minute, but there's a lot of overlap here, and that's intentional. And also, the goals relate to rural preservation, building where infrastructure currently exists, and making sure we've built out that area before we go out into green spaces, expanding strategically, both from a land preservation tool or rural area preservation, but also from a fiscal management, and then creating compatible land uses. This is a growth management area map. It falls in line with Legacy and Legacy 2030 in terms of terminology and colors and scheme. And so, the dark pink area is our city and town center. The orange is for urban neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods built before 1950. The yellow, which is our most predominant, growth management area is GMA 3, is for suburban neighborhoods. The light green is future growth areas. These are areas where infrastructure could potentially be expanded, and then rural areas are the dark green. This is where we would say infrastructure did not be expanded. There were six main changes to this proposed in the plan. The three small areas to by Lewisville Clemens and then down in the southeast, these are current projects in place for sewer expansion. So, if, once an area gets sewer, they automatically go to GMA 3. That's our policy. The larger area down in the southwest, that area, we're actually reverting back to what Legacy originally said back in 2001. So, that's why it was GMA 4 or future growth area in Legacy 2030, we're going back to suburban neighborhoods this time around. The main difference, or like to point to, is the one area up to the north. This is sort of related to the Beltway coming in. With the Beltway construction, it completely changes the dynamic in that area. There's going to be growth pressure there for new development. And working with the utilities staff, we felt that that was the best area. One key feature here is that the Beltway pretty much falls right along with the ridgeline, and so anything in this area will require a lift station, can't use gravity sewer, so it is going to be a significant cost associated with that. So, that's why we really wanted to target right in that one area around Germantown Road. For implementation, this is organized by theme and goal, but one of the key features here is flexibility. For this plan, we wanted it to be flexible and nimble. Things are changing very, very rapidly. Best management practices, technology, all of that changes very quickly, and we wanted this plan to be able to sort of mold or move as those changes are being made. And so, it's not exhaustive. We know we don't know the best management practices or everything today. That might change a couple months from now, a couple years from now, so we wanted to have it be open-ended. We gave some idea of how to move forward initially, but we know that things could change in the future. That's also why we have no timeline. Policies change, priorities change, staffing changes, new technology comes about, new opportunities present themselves that we need to sort of jump on. So, we wanted to make sure that we have that sort of nimble nature within the plan. And just to reiterate, the planning board adopted the plan during its September 12th meeting, and then the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee recommended approval in October 14th meeting. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Crum? Well, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I have a number of folks who have signed up to speak. First, for the proponents, Mr. Chris Leek, please. If you would, let me give you your name and address for the record, as if you could limit comments to three minutes.
Mayor Johns, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and City Council Member Chris Leek, Chair of the City-City County Planning Board, 100 North Main Street, Suite 25. City-County Planning Board, 100 North Main Street, Suite 2500, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Standing as Chair of the City-County Planning Board, I think our job is to be supportive to the staff, but yet be accountable to the citizens. So what I wanted to be sure, and the staff wanted the Planning Board to be sure, is that we had a cross-current of our community to make sure that the plan represented all citizens. A lot of things I was going to say, Amy's already stated, but I would like to share with you locations where community meetings were held. And one thing that I stressed at the time was a Planning Board member needed to be in each one of these just to take questions from citizens to make sure that all of their concerns were answered. We went to Sprad Street Recreation Community Center, the Central Library, Rural Hall Branch Library, Mini Lee Davis Harris Community Center, the Neil Bolton Home and Garden Building at the Winston-Salem Fairgrounds, the Milton Rhodes Center for the Arts, the Enterprise Conference and Event Center, Alex Watts Total Community Center in Tobacco Ville, Walker Town Library, Forsyth County Social Services Building, Union Cross Elementary School, Mary Alice Warren Community Center, and the Soft Fork Community Center. You can see, we went all across the community to make sure that every citizen's voice was heard. Not only that, I think Amy already mentioned, we had teen input, high school input, college input, over 4,000 comments. I really think that, I'm confident that the citizens had an opportunity to voice their opinion, to give us guidance, and to give us constructive feedback. So I would request, as Chair of the Planning Board, that you would move forward the adoption of the Forward 2045 Plan. I think I have others here behind me from the Planning Board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Leek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not really giving me 13 minutes, are you? Okay. Because I can fill them if you want. Matthew Mayers, I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. And also thank Mr. Murphy, Ms. Crum, and all the people who worked these past three or four years. It's a lot of work and time on this, on this plan. And you've heard me speak here a number of times and know that a big concern of mine is environmental sustainability and also equity. And I just want to encourage you to support what I think is a pretty solid plan. It's not a laundry list of every wonderful sustainability policy that I would want, but it's not supposed to be. And when you're ready for that, let me know. I've got it ready for you. I think I first found out that they were holding sessions or soliciting input probably at the fair in 2021, or possibly the Earth Day Fair in 2022, and got on their list. And I was able to participate in three different public meetings, including the one after the first draft came out, where I think Mr. Murphy sat and talked with me for probably 45 minutes. It's been, for me, it's been very open and easy to access. I think there may be some criticisms people may have about how the word has gotten out. It's a hard thing to do nowadays. Everybody is looking in different places. I'm not a social media guy, so I just got them by being on the list. So why am I particularly in support of this plan? Well, there's a couple of reasons. One is that I think it's very smart to be looking at the preservation of land for agricultural and natural purposes. A city and a county government can do a lot of things about their own operations to make sure that they're more environmentally sustainable, but there is probably none more important than trying to limit sprawl. And I think that's what this plan suggests. Another big reason I think this is a smart plan is that, as Mr. Murphy pointed out, this is for the city and the county. And as I'm sure all of you are maybe painfully aware, the county commissioners don't always see things the way you do. And a plan has to appeal to both bodies. Excuse me. So now's the hard part. Planning people probably thought they already had the hard part, but you get the really hard part, you and the staff, to figure out how to put the meat on the bones. And I hope you'll really knuckle down and do it, because there's some, there's some good inspiration here, but it needs a lot of policy work to make it happen, including, and I can't resist the urge to let you, to remind you, that four years ago, almost to the day, this council approved unanimously a sustainability resolution that called for reduction of greenhouse emissions here in the city. And to date, haven't really allocated the funds necessary to achieve that. In fact, I don't think a budget has been brought before this body that would do that. And many of you are about to enter into a strategic planning process. I hope that that will come up and that you will ask your management staff and your budget staff to do just that, to pull forth a budget that funds the things you say you want unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayers.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, thank you so much. I'm a lot shorter than everyone up here. My name is Mo McCray, 100 West First Street, 27101. I get to wear many hats in this city. I'm on your Planning Board. I am a local developer. I am married to someone in economic development. We are passionate about the city. We came about six years ago. And one of the first things that I was asked to do was serve on the Planning Board, and I have. And the opportunity that was given to us coming from DC is that this was a place for change, and that we were going to embark on writing a comprehensive plan. I'm an urban planner by education. I've read a lot of plans. This one's fabulous. It has reached so many people, from the youth to a variety of people in different wards and different parts of our city, to different circles. So at the farmer's market and at a book club, it was discussed. And I cannot recommend approval of this more. This is fabulous, and I really hope you guys feel that way as well. And thank you to our planning staff. They put in a lot of work over a lot of years to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, city staff. I want to start by saying goodbye and hello to all of our outgoing personnel. It has been a pleasure of a lifetime to work with all of you. And my phone will still work no matter where you are in life, and thank you so much for all you've done. I'm here speaking in support of this plan. You got to hear from the better McCray first, so nothing I say after this is going to matter at all. But this is wonderful. This is something that, as in economic development, we try to sell Winston-Salem to folks across the nation and across the world. And one of the biggest things that we have in our arsenal is our ability to put them with Chris, with Aaron, members of staff. They tell us on an almost weekly basis that the reason they've selected Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, is because of the ease it is to work and build and be here. And living here is just as easy and just as wonderful. So thank you so much for all you have done. You've empowered staff to be incredible, progressive, to really reach for the stars. I actually disagree with Chris on just this one thing. He said it's aspirational, but I don't believe so. We're already doing the amazing things that they have outlined, and this plan will help us continue to do so. Thank you all so much, and I'm in full support.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Is anyone else for the proponents that would like to be heard on this?
Good evening. Jason Thiel, 515 North Cherry Street, represent the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership. So I wanted to support this project for a number of reasons. Really enjoyed Mo's comments. It reminded me of a long time ago, I also went to planning school and worked in a planning department. And I read this plan. I worked with the people that put together this plan, and I know them. I've worked with them on several plans for downtown over decades, and it's a very hard job to come up with a comprehensive plan. Terms like or phrases herding cats maybe are appropriate, but I think it's important for our community, both the city and county, we have a consolidated city-county planning board, for them to work on an aspirational goal for our unified county, particularly given the challenges that are very, I think important that they stated, is that our limited amount of land in our county. I've always wondered, I moved here, I used to live in Florida, you know, Florida has 67 counties, and it's a much larger state. We have a smaller state. It's not a small state, but 100 counties just isn't enough. I mean, it's too many, I should say. It's too many counties. And it just seems like it'd be better if we had more land in each county, but that's for a whole nother story, a whole nother day. But I think it's important to highlight the tremendous professionalism, the goals. To me, it's a very well-done plan. The things that stand out to me is its conciseness, its readability, the fact that it is flexible, and yet it tries, it attempts to envision our city and county 20 years from now. And I often think about that and the impact it's going to have on our entire city. But I think the best thing about a comprehensive plan is it's something that you always have to look back upon as you make direct policy choices in the future. And that's the real important thing about it, because our priorities are limited, our priorities are not limited, but the things that we have to implement those priorities, such as money, land, resources, human resources, are limited. And so we have to be very creative and smart and strategic, and I think this plan brings us that way. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. Is anybody else's proponent would like to be heard? All right, we'll close from the proponent's side. For the opponent's, Philip Carter, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Pro Tem, and distinguished council members. And Mr. Philip Carter, I reside at 6965 Mazin Place. The Citizens for Accountability and Transparency, along with our partner organizations, which are several churches, several neighborhood associations, and multiple Forsyth County Democratic Party precinct chairs, stands with the Neighborhood Alliance and in all others in opposition to this draft 2045 plan to be voted on this evening. Our concerns pertaining to this plan, which we hope will be considered, are, and I'm going to mention six and speak the one, because there are others here that were speaking red, the lack of community ownership, insufficient public engagement, undiscussed policy changes, inadequate climate action, no clear targets, and as been mentioned by staff itself, very broad, vague in some areas as well. But I'm going to speak just momentarily to the lack of community ownership. Everyone who's gotten up here and spoken about staff, where staff has died, where planning has died, and they've been very precise in saying we had multiple outreach and community input, but I'd have you to note that over my years in watching city governance, input does not necessarily mean implementation. It just means that there was an engagement. We spoke with some individuals. And the people that I've spoken with, and those that have reviewed this comprehensive plan, as well as myself and others, feel that this plan is not actually community-driven, but more so staff-driven. Now, two times tonight, I've heard mention, you know, putting flesh on bones. Heard it once from Madam Pro Tem and one of the men up here. And I like to think what we're doing is putting together an aeroplane with passengers on it, wanting to fly it and build it as we go. And sometimes that's not the best route. It's not the best, sometimes it's not the most economic route. And it certainly isn't the route that benefit the constituency of Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. So with that, I would say that C4AT and its partner organizations adamantly request that you, our city council persons, delay approval of the draft Forward 2045 plan and revise it to prioritize meaningful public input, enforceable policies, and climate resilience. Furthermore, we believe by taking additional time, we can ensure that the plan serves the long-term needs of all the citizens of Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. I would hope this, I would like to say, as Honorable Mr. Lawson says, I know sometimes we do a lot of talk, and it's almost as if no one is listening. Let that not be the case tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, George Bryan, 1326 Glade Street, 27101. I'm here tonight with the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, a group of neighborhood representatives that for 26 years has reviewed planning board agendas each month and been active in such issues as assign ordinance, tree ordinance, PRD definitions, group home ordinance, infill definition, cell tower ordinance, and much more. We're probably the only group that reviews these issues each month with no financial interest. We've been following the development of Forward 2045, and we sent you a letter and the Planning Board a letter in April with our concerns about the development of the plan, which was prior to the draft in front of you. We're concerned about this draft, its development process, its oversight, its community engagement, and its recommendations. The plan uses wonderful words and shares nice visions and accurate histories. However, as we were involved in Legacy 2030 plan, we know what this plan, this plan only offers lip service to the visions and does not provide the leadership that is needed to match the current challenges of Winston-Salem. In the city-county, we're going through change. More renters, less homeownership, shifting populations, shifting corporate locations, growing homeless populations, less storefront, more online, working from home, not office, and the resulting transportation changes. We need a plan that brings vitality back to Winston-Salem and to spur economic growth. The process of this plan did not bring together experts and engage community members to discuss the scope and the issues which were needed to be debated. The planning staff wrote the plan with oversight from the Planning Board. But I can tell you, from being a member on the Planning Board during this time, there was little over, there was no or little oversight. Getting answers from the staff as to the process was not easy. In terms of input, the questions were designed by the staff, not experts across the field of issues, and provided only sticky-note meetings with input to siloed questions. Many pertinent questions were not asked. Then the draft was written, and we could not get the Planning Board staff to even present to our group. Instead, they encouraged going to sticky-note meetings. There are major issues in areas that are left out, some climate issues, like redefining what a major storm is. There's no grappling with the consequence of more rental than ownership and how that affects mobility up the economic ladder that is part of our built capital wealth. There's no discussion of short-term rentals and corporate ownership of homes despite the written desire to stabilize neighborhoods. There's no grappling with non-tax land from our biggest employment sector, education and healthcare. Yes, no ways to encourage partnerships with this sector to help out in the plan. There was no transparent discussion of ending single-family zoning in Forsyth County. There's no suggestion of goals for neighborhood activity centers or ordinances to protect. Perhaps most lacking is no measurable goals, no mapping of our current situation, no timelines, and no one responsible. We urge you to either table this and add issues and more engagement, or to pass this and ask for a second step with a timeline that will add issues, add measurable goals and responsibilities, and bring this back to you. and responsibilities, and bring this back to you for approval. Thank you.
Carolyn Highsmith.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Highsmith from the Connaught Hills Community in South Winston-Salem and live at thirty-three thirty-five Anderson Drive, two seven one two seven. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the draft for twenty forty-five plan, where significant gaps and omissions have been identified and need to be addressed before final approval is given by the city council. I have fifteen years of experience with city-county land use planning and know the impact of both good and bad land use planning and policies. This includes work on the South Suburban Area Plan, the former legal comprehensive plan, legacy comprehensive plan, the South Suburban Area Update Plan, and the Peters Creek Parkway Quarter Area Plan. I have also been a neighborhood leader in numerous zoning cases affecting the Connaught Hills community over the past fifteen years. So I can assert that this draft process did not offer meaningful community engagement in the process of developing this new plan, nor does the plan commit to continuing any effective public engagement at this implication, implementation. Why? Because a major stakeholder was left out of the process, and that is all of the city neighborhoods in Winston-Salem, especially the minority populated city neighborhoods. Before this plan should even be considered for adoption, a new section needs to be written entitled "Informed and Involved Community Partnership," where communication and engagement processes on land use issues are accessible, transparent, equitable, ongoing, truly representing community input leading to equitable outcomes. An equitable community involvement process must lead to measurable equitable outcomes, a subject that is not included in this current draft plan. A commitment to ongoing and effective community engagement and participation that is equitable, accountable, and accessible must be made by this city council. In a comprehensive plan, equity involves making thoughtful, fact-based, deliberate decisions that expand opportunities, choices, and access, especially for those currently facing the greatest barriers in Winston-Salem Forsyth County. It's also about going beyond intentions and taking concrete actions that result in tangible, meaningful, and equitable outcomes for all its residents. Tied into measurable equitable outcomes, it's also the need to revise and expand the current draft plan's guiding principles of equity, resiliency, and limibility to those, to new and better principles of equity, accountability, transparency, and accessibility proposed in the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance's document critiquing this draft plan that was sent to all the city council members. In conclusion, before this draft plan should ever be considered for adoption, the critical gaps and omissions that the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance and the Coalition for Accountability and Transparency have identified must be addressed by the city council. This city can and should do better by this draft plan. Thank you.
Melinda Donegan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Melinda Donegan, and I live at eighteen seventy-five Mallard Lake Drive, Winston-Salem, two seven one oh six. I'm also a member of the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, I've been a member for about twenty years, and this is a group that's dedicated to the preservation of neighborhood quality of life. I'm also a past member of the planning board, and either as a member of the Neighborhood Alliance or the planning board, I've been involved in a number of different planning efforts over the years, area plans, U D O text amendments, more than I can remember. And I'm speaking through the lens of this experience. The Forward Twenty Forty-Five Plan establishes five main vision themes or aspirations for the future, which you've heard about in the presentation, and they are all important, worthy aspirations to pursue. The question I have, however, is whether the plan provides the structure for these aspirations to be practically obtained, attained. To set an achievable goal, you need to know your starting point, you need a measurement of your current conditions. Only then can you develop targeted goals and formulate specific strategies to achieve them. To make my point, I just want to focus on one tiny aspect of the plan, climate change mitigation. The plan calls for a rather broad-based approach, low-density attached housing and all residential, promoting renewable energy, energy efficiency, studying the tree canopy, green infrastructure for stormwater. Those are all great things, but it's a broad brush approach. A more targeted approach would be to call for mapping of the tree canopy, call for mapping of heat islands by measuring the temperature of different parts of the city and see what those differences are, and cities have done that, Raleigh has done that, Durham has done that, and they found like a ten percent, a ten-degree difference on an eighty-eight-degree day between different parts of the city. Mapping impervious surface, mapping the floodplain, that would give us a baseline to know where we are. And on the basis of this information, we can develop a plan to mitigate the effects of climate change, especially heat, which we are going to definitely have to deal with in the coming twenty years, and increased intense rainfall events, and use that information to develop specific policies like a target goal of what percent of the tree canopy that we want to preserve in our community, what types of heat mitigation do we want to require in the design of streets and buildings, what changes do we need in the stormwater ordinance to ensure that when we get these intense rainfall events, our infrastructure is going to be able to handle that. We need to prepare for these issues, and our peer cities have done that in their plans. So for example, Durham and Charlotte have more recent comp plans, and they have more specific metrics in those plans. Raleigh's is a little older, so it may not be applicable here, but Charlotte has metrics for all of its plan goals. For example, it's got a means of measuring environmental justice. How does it do that? Well, it has maps for all of these different things that I suggested earlier, like tree canopy and impervious surface and floodplain, and then it adds to that maps for households in the proximity of heavy industrial uses and proximity to major transportation infrastructure. And if you look at all those maps, you see where the issues are, what neighborhoods are most affected, what are the neighborhoods that we need to specifically care and to address the environmental justice issues. So I could go on, but I know my time is about to run out. So the bottom line here is that commitment to equity, for example, if you're going to have that commitment, you need to have a way of measuring it. And I think that's an important part of what should be in a plan. So I'm urging you not to be satisfied with this plan as is, and as other speakers have argued, this should more be a vision of the
Thank you, Ms. Donegan.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're exhausted our time, I will close the public hearing on this. This did go through our CD Housing General Government Committee, and I recognize the chairman of that for a motion.
Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval.
Second. Motion, second by Councilor McIntosh, any further discussion? Councilmember Sepia.
I just need a little clarification. I need a little clarification, Mr. City Manager. I think in January, we're going to be looking at our strategic plan. How does the strategic plan differ from this comprehensive plan? Because it seems to me that many of the things that we want to do for the city would be including some of these actions.
Yes, ma'am, the city will be, city council will be undertaking reviewing the full strategic plan for the organization. Strategic plan is a focused three-to-five-year effort on what are the measurable, attainable goals that you want to achieve during that time period, which is then incorporated into the annual budget and capital improvement plan. So the comprehensive plan is a broad-based plan that has a long-term outlook. Your strategic plan should be taking the comprehensive plan, your capital plan, those other types of plans, and breaking those down into those measurable, attainable goals that you would like to see the city achieve and are prepared to budget for.
So does this Forward Twenty Twenty-Five Plan substitute for the legacy plan?
So, Councilor Chippie, you're at your point, so this is a replacement for the legacy plan, so if council adopts this plan tonight, that will be the comprehensive plan for Winston-Salem and then ultimately Forsyth County, if a commissioner or so choose in the future.
So all of the zoning cases that we referenced, when does it fit the plan? That's what this would be instead of that? Okay, thank you.
I had some of the same thoughts, I saw this as a vision board, and then after it's adopted, that we would put the measures together. I hear what the neighborhood associations are saying, if it doesn't get measured, it doesn't get done, we need goals, that's something that's always frustrated me about city work versus being in the private sector, and I think we need more goals, I think in timelines, when are we going to reach those? Because as Mr. Mayor said, we have not done a good job of keeping up with our sustainability program. However, I did not think this was the document where we would do those things, and I think all of the zoning, also a valid point, we need to get rid of the zoning that was perfect for the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. But when would we do that?
So, Councilor Mundy, I'll take a swing at that, because it's been a big topic of conversation tonight. So your comprehensive plan is a broad-based document, it's been stated many times tonight, that's really trying to capture all the main themes that are important to the community that you've heard through, from the community in those outputs, in those input sessions, and put them in one place to be studied further. So it is not uncommon for a comprehensive plan to not have very specific goals in those. And I'm looking at legacy twenty thirty right here in front of me, and very many of the goals in here are very much in the nature of what you see in this plan. Where this comes to life is each year, the planning director sits down with the planning board to develop an annual work program of things that need to be implemented and frankly, to put meat on the bone with a lot of these big-picture policy recommendations. So that is something that comes to the planning board each year, that the board adopts, and that is really the work contract between the planning staff and the planning board each year. So that is where those policies begin to come to life, through text amendments, small-area plans, policy decisions, potentially zoning cases, that's where those goals get further defined and fleshed out and implemented.
I want to be supportive of this plan, and I have a lot of confidence in our staff. At the same time, I want to make sure that we are hearing the neighborhoods' concerns, and even if this is not the right document to incorporate those, that I think planning, as we go forward, need to figure out how to adequately incorporate the neighborhoods who want to have a voice in this and mix those in when the time comes.
Thank you. Councilor McIntosh.
I would agree with Councilor Mundy, I share a lot of the concerns that were voiced, but I do agree that this is not the document to do it in. If we look back at legacy twenty thirty, I thought that was a fabulous document, but that document called for or anticipated population growth that didn't happen. Had we done that and acted upon it, we would have built roads and done things that just never came to pass. So being so specific in this document, I think, can lead us down a path that we don't want to go in. Staying broad and staying, and staying, you know, small and brief in this document allows us flexibility to do things in a market that we don't know where it's going to go. Carolina Cor has the potential to change what happens in the triad in ways that we just don't really know how to anticipate. So staying flexible, I think, is a very good idea. The ability, the necessity to react or to plan and be smart about sustainability is absolutely important, we need to do that, and I think we will. We have been lax, we've gone through a series of budget issues, and we had to pay our people more, we had to do some things that just had to be done. We now have to do sustainability, we've got to put some money into that. We just ask our citizens to do, to pay ten percent more on their property, and that was tough to do, we did it, but now we've got to do some other things. So I'm very much in support of this, but I also do agree that there's some really valid questions that were asked tonight, that we need to, and this gives us the flexibility to plug those things in as we go along. I don't think we're quite building the airplane as we're flying it, but we are, we do give ourselves the ability to add those things as we go along, and I think we need to, and we have to do so, I'm very much in support of this. And I think it's really well done, I think the staff did a great job, thank you.
Councilor Clark.
Yeah, I'm just going to give one specific example that I have an interest in, and that is, should we allow duplexes in single-family zoning? It's a question I have raised, and I think one the council needs to address, and a lot of communities have. But that is a very specific item, and there's a lot of meat that has to be put on that bone, for example, in an RS nine neighborhood, if you put a duplex, does that mean you've got to have eleven thousand square feet versus nine? It gets complicated. But I do like the idea of something broad, and this report suggests that we look at it, and that's just one example. So I do think there's a lot of work that needs to follow this, but I think when you get down into the weeds, this document would be almost unmanageable if you tried to do that with everything. But I do support us taking it a bite at a time and looking at areas and saying, okay, do we need to do something different here? And I just mentioned duplexes as an example.
Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
I do think we missed the opportunity for another snappy jingle. Last time around, we had a really good theme song to go along with our report.
All right, we do have a motion before us to approve this Forward Twenty Forty-Five Comprehensive Plan. Councilor Burrow.
Yes, I think that we've heard a lot of concern, and again, I'm going to say, I feel like members of our community feel like we didn't really have a lot of widespread engagement and opportunities to hear more and ask more questions. I was just looking at the number of attendees at twenty meetings, two hundred and fifty attendees, only two hundred and fifty attendees in person, and this is a city with two hundred and fifty-five thousand-plus citizens. I would just like to see more engagement. And I heard Mr. Leek list off the locations where the meetings did take place, and I'm thinking about East Winston and Northeast Winston specifically, and I did hear the Mini Davis Recreation Center location, but that was the only location in that area. So we missed a lot of people, and I'm not quite sure how these meetings were advertised. So again, I'm going to ask that we pause this, I'm making a substitute motion to pause this, and take advantage of this opportunity to pick up on more community engagement.
I don't understand your motion to pause, what does that mean?
Table this item.
Indefinitely.
Until at least March, the first Monday meeting in March, council meeting in March.
It's a substitute motion to table this item until the first meeting in March, is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second, we're back to the, I'm sorry. John seconded. John seconded, I'm sorry, okay, so we'll now vote on the substitute motion to continue this until first meeting in March. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your hand. Two, all those, excuse me, three. All those against substitute motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails, and a vote of five to three. We're now back to the original motion to approve the plan. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
I didn't come up. I didn't get anything. Where is it? Oh, well. It's not working. I didn't get a voting screen, but I guess because of the motion, I'm good, okay.
Okay, the motion passes with seven, I mean sticks in favor, two negatives. All right, we'll now move on to item G four.
Item G four, public hearing in consideration of zoning petition of LaFever Limited LLC from RS nine to AGL. Property is located at the south side of Kernersville Road between Berkeley Road and Foothills Drive, containing approximately eight point five acres located in the east ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing
You already have petitioners and principals of the petitioners here, if you wish to hear from us.
Thank you. Seeing no opposition, I will declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilor Sepia.
Yes, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistent Yes, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W dash 3634.
Sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor MacIntosh. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Just a minute. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Councilor Chippewa?
I think this is a very unique situation in the east ward. And this land was annexed. For many years, it was outside of the city limits. But this is an actual fish hatchery. And they are responsible for Chris Murphy.
I probably don't want to get it wrong, but I believe they were the first, one of the first fish hatcheries and the largest fish hatchery for koi in the U.S. They've been there since, at least prior to 1958. So they've been there a very long time. They have a site there. I think one in Surrey County, maybe two. And they also have some other farms in Virginia. But it's, it's something that's been there a very long time in that area. And again, we heard no oppositions.
Thank you. And so I just say that because we have so many little jewels in our city that we don't know about. But sometimes I'm going to ask you, if you want to know about, know about koi and their production, go out on Kernersville Road and you'll see where they are and take a tour. Because it's just a wonderful business that's been there for a long, long time.
I'm going.
Yeah, thanks.
Item G5?
Item G5, resolution, appointing a new city attorney for the city of Winston-Salem.
Ms. Clark, would you read the resolution?
Yes. Whereas city attorney Angela L. Carmen will retire on January 1st, 2025, and her last day of employment with the city of Winston-Salem will be December 31st, 2024. And whereas the mayor and city council have gone through an extensive process to select and appoint a new city attorney to serve as chief legal counsel for the city of Winston-Salem. And whereas the mayor and city council wish to appoint senior assistant city attorney, Tanya Camille French, who has served as an attorney for the city of Winston-Salem since 2018, as its new city attorney effective December 31st, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. And whereas senior assistant city attorney, Tanya Camille French, has agreed to serve as the city's next city attorney. And whereas the terms of an employment contract have been reached to the satisfaction of the mayor and city council. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and Winston-Salem City Council hereby appoint as city attorney, senior assistant city attorney, Tanya Camille French, effective December 31st, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. as indicated above. Now therefore be it further resolved that the mayor and Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve the employment contract for senior assistant city attorney, Tanya Camille French, as the city's next city attorney with a starting salary of $235,000 effective December 31st, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. with the public swearing-in ceremony of attorney French at the regularly scheduled council meeting on January 6th, 2025.
Quick correction, it's December 31st, 2024.
Yeah, I'm not staying longer.
We tried.
Mayor Protem has the motion.
I move for approval of one, the appointment of senior assistant city attorney, Tanya Camille French, as the next city attorney effective January 1st, 2025. And two, her employment contract as negotiated with a starting salary of $235,000.
Second.
Mayor, may I make a correction? December 31st, 2024 at 5:00 p.m.
Angela's leaving at 5:05.
I didn't get that correction in.
Did I get a second to that motion?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilor Taylor, second motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please vote yes. And anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Ms. French, let us recognize you here. Thank you. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you in days to come. The next item, please.
Public comment.
Public comment period is a time once per month that the city council invites citizens to speak it on matters of their germaine to city government. We set aside 30 minutes for these presentations and we asked each presenter to limit your comments to three minutes. First one is Mackenzie Kate Allen.
All right, y'all, it's been almost two hours. If you need to take a deep breath or stretch while I'm talking, you can totally do that. Mackenzie Kate Allen, 3490 Prison Ridge Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127. Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members and amazing city staff. I am here tonight on behalf of the Winston-Salem ambassadors to express our gratitude and appreciation for your support with the holiday parade. We were handpicked to take over the parade last year from the Winston-Salem J.C.'s when they closed their chapter. And without your direct support, with the barricades, the cones and the Winston-Salem Police Department officers, we could not do the parade. While it does take us hundreds of human power hours and tons of details and lots of planning, we are so pleased to be able to do this event for the city, which is of course free and open to the public. We have tweaked the parade a little bit with a focus on embracing the wide diversity of our great, great city. We celebrate winter solstice, Yule, Christmas, Hanukkah and Kwanzaa at the holiday parade. This year, we are having Hop the Black Santa, Santititis, our own Miss America 2019, Mia Amani Franklin as grand marshal, and Uncle Brent Campbell as deputy marshal, along with Bolt from the Winston-Salem Dash, marching bands and so many community groups and businesses. And of course, the holiday parade will be followed by the city's tree lighting. We are very, very excited, tired, but very excited. And we will see you all in 19 days, December 7th at 5:00 p.m. Please do put it on your calendars. And thank you again, city, for all of your support.
Thank you. Michael Morgan?
Dear Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and honorable members of the city council. I'm Michael Morgan. I live in Winston-Salem and this is my speech on homelessness and affordable housing. I'm a seventh grader from the art space school and I'm a member of Boy Scouts Trip 920 of the Old Hickory Council. I've lived in Winston-Salem my whole life and I've learned that there are a ton of homeless people in our community and affordable housing is in short supply. I'm hoping my research can persuade you to fund the housing problems in Winston-Salem because then we wouldn't have to worry about the homeless people's housing. Whenever I see homeless families on the street, on the side of the street, it makes me feel sad. But with the help of the city council, we can change all of that. Did you know that children and families make up 30% of the homeless population? There simply is not enough space for homeless shelters for families and children. I would like the city council to fund affordable apartments so homeless people and families will not just live in shelters. Homelessness is especially harmful for children. Research shows that even small periods of homelessness can have great harm on children throughout their whole life. Children who are homeless usually experience emotional problems like mental health issues such as anxiety and depression. They are more, they are more likely to suffer from more behavioral problems at school and at home, making it difficult to learn and also getting along with their parents. Homeless children are often suspended and have more trouble staying in school because they don't have a stable home. Sometimes they have to repeat a grade because their behavior gets in the way of learning and academic performance. Moving all the time because they don't have a permanent home means they have to switch schools and they don't have a stable or supportive education. The physical health of children also suffers from homelessness. They do not get regular medical care and are exposed to unsanitary and unsafe living conditions. The stress of being homeless releases harmful hormones that affect your body and can cause illness and disease. Poor nutrition is also a problem for homeless kids. They often go hungry and when they do get food, most of the time it's the wrong food and it's not nutritious. In order to guard against illness, infections and disease, children, children need a balanced diet with lots of fruits and vegetables. Sadly, homeless children and families do not get this regular benefit and opportunity. I know the city, I know the, I know the, I know the city council did not build, did not build the houses. But with Biden administration providing funding to our city, we should be able to work together to invest in partnerships with other organizations to build affordable housing for the people and children of Winston-Salem. Projects like the Metropolitan Village on Fourth Street and the city council's recent support of the co-op on Spring Street are really good, are really great because they give homeless families the chance for a permanent home.
Michael, your time is up. Can you summarize quickly for us?
Basically, how do you expect kids and families to have a home if they don't have the right education and health?
Good, thank you. Great job, Michael. Well said, Michael. Kevin Krannis?
Kevin Krannis, 1026 Salem Village Lane, Clemens, 27012. I am a board member of North Carolina Tennis. I'm also a board member of Winston-Salem Tennis. And we are the local CTA, Community Tennis Association here in Winston-Salem. And we administer the adult leagues. We also run, administer the young folks tennis program. It's a free program for kids throughout the city and we do it all year long, different locations. And I came here tonight to just to say thank you. Okay, thank you. Two and a half years ago, you made a very good decision. Okay, and that decision was to hire, serve first tennis, racket and tennis. Okay, get a little tongue tied there. Sorry about that. They're going to, they're going to get me for that one. These two very enthusiastic co-owners have taken Haynes Park and have turned it into something very special. Okay, it is something special already and you should know that. That is a feather in the cap of this city to have 14 hard-truth courts, clay courts, available to the public. Okay, they're not country club. This is for the public. Okay, and I think that's wonderful. And so they've done a lot of wonderful things in their short term there. And this past year, that's been outstanding. 13 tournaments have been held there. Okay, by the end of this year, it'll be 13. Adult tournaments, junior tournaments, bringing folks into the city, players into the city. It's been wonderful. But I'm biased. Okay, I'll admit I'm biased. I like them. They're my friends. Okay, this morning I woke up, I got an email this morning. Okay, it was from a board member of Southern Tennis. Southern Tennis is nine states, the nine southern states. Just want to read to you two sentences or so. Serve First Racket Sports has been selected as the 2024 recipient of the USTA Southern Member Organization of the Year Award. This award is presented to the member organization to recognize outstanding service to the local community. That's you guys. That's us. Okay, to the organization members and to the game of tennis. Okay, you did a great job picking them, selecting them. Okay, please continue to work with them. They are very good. I just want you to understand how good they are. Okay, it's not just my biased words. That's Southern Tennis. Okay, there's only one award a year for that. Okay, Alabama, Arkansas, Georgia, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee. Here it is, Winston-Salem got the award. It's wonderful. Okay, and so please tell your staff, ask questions, reach out. They have connections, they know things, they're very well organized, they are community-focused. Okay, take advantage of them. That's all I can say as far as, it really stresses me out, see it, wow, that they are at the top of the game. They can help with facilities. There's facility grants out there.
Thank you very much.
Ask them about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Herson?
Greetings, everybody. My name is Cynthia Herson, 212 Willa Davis Drive. I came up here to talk about something else, mainly y'all, but out of the mouse, baby. He made me think about what I told y'all the last time when I was here and I asked y'all to get Anita Miles' book about homelessness in Winston-Salem. I'm looking around and I see ain't nobody got it. But anyway, y'all need to, because what that baby said, it's a shame that him, at a young age, can recognize homelessness and can recognize the need for affordability, which involved children being able to have a decent place to live and stay. It's sad that you all are still not listening. I come up here all the time talking and every time I see y'all, I'm looking at y'all, I don't think y'all hear me. Y'all hear me, but y'all not paying any attention. Does not make no sense that we all cannot work together. Does not make no sense that y'all can take a vote and I can't vote with you all when I'm in disagreement or agreement with you all. I think that needs to stop. I also think, like I said, yeah, your house is, is nice, Barbara Berks, but I don't know whether or not a garage makes it more or less. But what I do know is this, it's not affordable for our community. It's not affordable in my community. We got homeless people day in, all around. You go to every corner, you gonna see somebody, somebody is in a tent. I know y'all see this. I know that y'all know why y'all building all these little nice apartments and these nice little houses. Where do we come in it? I don't want to be at the low income. I do not want to stay at the low income. But right now, I'm at a low income where I can only afford what I can afford. So when y'all keep coming in my neighborhood, in my community, and yeah, I say it's my community because don't none of y'all stay up in there, then none of y'all come back to the hood to stay in the hood. So it's my community and I want to stay there, I want to live there. And I want it to be affordable for not only me, but the rest of the people who don't want to be in a tent. If you all raise my rent in the next year or two, y'all already know, I ain't going to be able to afford nothing. I'm not going to be able to afford it. So guess what? I'm gonna have my tent, but guess where I'm gonna put my tent at? Around y'all neighborhood. I guarantee you that. Have a nice day. Y'all think about what I said and don't forget Dr. Anita Miles' book, Homelessness in Winston-Salem, because it don't make no sense. It's sad that y'all got an award, but what y'all get award for, for not listening? Bye, y'all.
Al Jabbar?
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Al Wadu Jabbar. I live at 617 Daffodil Drive, Kernersville, North Carolina, 27284. Since you've already voted, I just wanted to bring out a couple of key points I think that you might consider going forward. This council in this present state, this is probably your last meeting. We have a council that's going to be seated. And you voted on something that this council is going to have to govern over for the next four years. I think it was very, very, very undisciplined of you not to think about the people who were voted in to be seated next month. I want to touch on for a minute this piece of affordable housing. The number of $230,000 has been thrown around consistently. But what has not been thrown around is available funding for potential affordable homeowners. A $230,000 mortgage could potentially equate to $130,000 worth of funding. That means that a resident that's paying $1,400 a month for rent, they could afford this affordable housing that's being listed at $230,000. Do you want houses built in your community that don't have driveways paved and garages? Is that what you want in your community? Citizens in Winston-Salem certainly don't want that. I want to touch on one closing point. One of the things that Michael Mc said that you dealing with a people who will show you a jar of grape jelly that never seen a grapevine. What has happened here in the light of Councilman Monday, who stated, I can't afford a $230,000 home, but he lives in a $350,000 home. That's selling a jar of grape jelly that never seen a grapevine. That's not fair to our citizens that think.
Good to see all of y'all, and thank you so much for your service, especially you outgoing members from many hard years of work. Without you stepping up to serve and run for office, we don't have local government. So thank you very much, and great to see some of my colleagues in the past also. My name is Gary Roberts, junior, and I live on 916 Holland Street in the West Salem neighborhood, and some of my neighbors are also here tonight. I just want to speak with you briefly about parks and specifically park maintenance. Parks, I'm sure, were emphasized in the comp plan that you just adopted, and they're so important to communities. They really help to tie us together. We get to interact with people that we don't normally get to associate with, different age brackets. They obviously improve our physical health, our mental health, and just sense of connectivity to the broader community. Well-maintained parks really should be the crown jewels, along with open space of any city, particularly of our size. I've been here about 23 years, and unfortunately, I can't really say that confidently about Winston-Salem. Not in regard to the number of parks, I know we're well over 90 now, and I think that's a good number of parks, but my concern is in regard to maintenance. If you haven't already, I want to really encourage y'all to go out and check out some of our peer communities, get out and walk around and take advantage of their facilities and compare them to ours. Forsyth County, Greensboro, Raleigh, Durham, and even smaller communities such as High Point and Kernersville, Lewisville, and little old Jamestown, population 5,000. They have a knockout golf shop there, at their pro shop, and Alexander County, Rocky Face Park, picnic shelters, bathrooms, wayfinding, signage. Please, I want to encourage you to do that. And so, obviously, improving park maintenance takes more money, and so here's a couple of the suggestions that you may want to consider. Obviously, you know the budgetary demands of the city much more than I do. Consider selling the mulch. I think we still maybe give that away, that's black gold, and we shouldn't give it away, I don't think, to people that don't even live in the city. Low interest and forgivable loans. Certainly, many of you remember Bell Brothers, hundreds and thousands of dollars spent there several years ago. The North Liberty Station, North Liberty Urban Farmers Market, I was told this past Friday, they were open from four to six, which are odd hours for a farmer's market. I went up there and it was closed. See, I'm running out of time. Reduced fluoride in our water, that's gaining national traction, would probably help our community health as well, save money. And beg to differ on the DEI, I think we spent about $1.7 million on that. Based upon the color of our skin, or sexual orientation, or gender, we have policies in place for our city to move through the organization based on merit and skill. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Oh, I brought some pictures I took of Salem Lake earlier this year. I have copies for each of you. It's kind of an embarrassing liability.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Richard Miller?
Richard Miller, 704 North Trade Street, 27101. I'm here tonight because I got shut out of the meeting two weeks ago. We talked about something about parking downtown, and we were stabbed in the back and stabbed in the heart. The issues with parking downtown are a lot deeper. I spent a lot of time nearly 40 years ago working to get rid of parking meters, which were a big problem for people coming downtown. People still have a problem with paying for parking downtown. They don't know what they're getting. They don't know where they're gonna park, and the inconvenience leaves a lot to be desired. But we got rid of them on Trade Street and eventually on Liberty Street in the 5, 6, 700 blocks. I have spoken and asked many times, repeatedly in at least one meeting, that Trade Street and Liberty Street and other property owners down in businesses say we need to be exempted from these parking fees, as we've been exempted for nearly 40 years. If it wasn't for getting rid of that parking fee, we wouldn't have what we fought so hard to get down there. I've worked hard to get businesses downtown in the northern Arch District area there, got businesses such as Insomnia Cookies, Cheesecakes by Alex, Fedigan's Wake, The Garage was a part of it, and several other businesses. And some of these businesses, these smaller businesses, are in danger. They're very concerned that they won't be able to have customers that can come down anymore because of the cost, and the cost is being raised up so exponentially. Talk about the cost of parking and how what other cities are doing. Well, I'm not worried about Greensboro, Raleigh, and Durham, and Charlotte, and Asheville. As a matter of fact, Raleigh has taken the first step to eliminating charges to the public for parking. They've taken the first step. So they're getting ready to do a pilot program that allows free parking, because they've been charging for parking forever. So, and I want to thank Ms. Burke for courageously standing up to get this not considered until another council is sworn in, because I think one council member will also be affected by this. I also want to thank, thank you, Mr. McIntosh, for sticking that on us, because that's not, that wasn't right of you to do that. It was not right for people downtown to have to bear a burden when we have the best downtown in North Carolina, and we could have it better if we're not getting hammered with fees. 10% tax increase, you asked for, you shoved it on us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking for the county, for the council to rescind part of this and not go up so much and exempt trade and Liberty Streets.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Apostle Sackcloth?
Apostle T. Sackcloth, 3727 Indian Avenue and 3100 Patterson Avenue. Greetings to the council, council member, pro tem, and all the councils. I'm here on two things, business and always church. In God we trust. I don't think anybody in here disagrees with "in God we trust." Now, what I'm looking for and asking for from the council, I've been in this city, my father came in '61, he started The Peanut House, a restaurant which we run. We've been in this city from '61 up until the present day. Now, I'm gonna cut things short, I'm getting ready to retire, I'm old, my body's broken down. We have some very successful contracts, I think Mr. Ben, right there, he puts up with me a lot with the city. But basically, it comes down to dollars. The north end is just depleting. Everybody talks about center of town, I see money being spent well on the east side. Church owns some properties there, we're well interested in building affordable housing. I want to know about her property, about her program. Do what we can do with our resources. But in the north end of town, Wake Forest and the area of University has been blessed with some $35 million of influx of capital downtown. I think in the center, we have a lot. Everything is growing except for Winston-Salem, and Winston-Salem is set for north side. I don't think I've seen in 30 years up there in north side where I am, at 3100 Patterson Avenue, is a auto zone. What I'm seeking for, for my business, a funding level that every mom and pops can step into. What I want to do is borrow $1,000 at zero, well, no, $1,000 at 1.5% for 10 years. Don't make much sense, does it? That's what the city writes me as a, I'm not gonna put it on a moniker, I'm putting it on as a small business, says, "Can you meet this? Can your business make $100,000 a year? If I gave you a loan for $1,000 and you give you 10 years to pay it back, would you pay it back at 0.1% to 5%?" Yes. But I want that underpinned by a grant, or a, what do you call it, grant gift, or it says, "As long as you do what you're supposed to do, create the jobs or whatever it is what you're inflicting in the community, I need $1 million for 10 years." So I've got a $1,000 loan from the city, or entry that's backed by $1 million for up to 10 years, on revenues of $100,000 over 10 years, I can make the interest payments between 0, 1, and 5%. Now, why is it 0, 1, 1, and 5%? First of all, grants don't really come with interest, but it's a grant that says, "Well, we went through COVID." A zero says if the economy falls apart, and if I've done what I was supposed to do with the money you've loaned and trusted me in my business model, well, if the economy falls apart, you'll be good to get anywhere from 0 to 1.5% on your money. Nobody can foresee the economy. So a lot of times, the city programs are funding around, "What you gonna do 10 years from now?" I don't know. I handed a proposal to the county, based on job creation, mobile food trucks, and we're trying to go mobile. But I can't tell you what 10 years are gonna be from now. I can't tell if I'm gonna be here 10 years from now, but I have been. I've seen business investments by the city come and go, some in my area. I've tried sometimes, but too much red tape. I'm not here for red tape now, I'm just here to ask, listen, I'm 63, I'm working home, I got sciatica nerve, I do what I can do, I have a next generation I'm interested in, but I want to see the north side go. There's money and there's influx. Give me a model program that I can enter into. Sure, I can pay the interest on $1,000 a month for 10 years. You say, "Why would you pay that?" But a million, I could pay as well for 10 years. The investment, you're gonna make back.
Your time is up, Mr. Sackcloth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Miles, Arnetta, excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Dr. Anita Miles, I stand before you as a homeless advocate, as I've been doing for the past several years. I'd like to bring your attention to the new Affordable Housing Program, Exhibit C. If you go to Exhibit C, I'm gonna offer you a check and balance system. East Ward, five units. Northeast Ward, 10 units. North Ward, five. Northwest, one. Southeast, one. South, one. Southwest, four. West, zero. That's a total of 27 multifamily and single-family units, for a total of 1,659 units from the period of 2018 to 2024. The funding has been close to $47 million. $47 million is in your paperwork that was presented by staff. Of that $47 million, from 2018 to 2024, only 15 individuals and families were placed in the units of those 27 units. 15. From 2018 to 2024, 15 individuals and single families were placed in these properties. They were placed in Salem Gardens, the Holman Ministries, and 800 North Spring Street through rapid rehousing. Mr. Clark, you asked several council meetings ago, was the city helping our homeless population? If you have $47 million, are you telling me you can only help 15 families or individuals that are homeless? That child, Michael, used data from my book, Understanding Homelessness in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. We're not doing a good job, because we're not working together. I'm gonna ask you and our future elected officials that'll be sitting in your seats, we must work together to address our homeless population. In 2018, we had 400 people, individuals, on our streets daily, 400. In 2024, we have over 1,000. We don't have enough space for our homeless population as it sits today. The program that city staff have driven, have initiated, is good, but it will not work for our homeless population. Councilmember Monday, thank you for giving the community the heads-up that you gave us in looking out for affordable housing. I salute you, sir, and thank you to those members that are exiting. God bless.
All right, council members, the 30 minutes is up. One more person is without objection, I will let that person speak. Adam Smith, I can't remember the first name.
Adrian.
Adrian, excuse me.
Adrian, yep, sorry, bad handwriting.
Okay.
Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem, Adams, Council. My name is Adrian Smith. I live in West Salem at 916 Granville Drive. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank John Larson for his eight years spent on the council. You represented us very well, and we're better for the work that you've done. I'd also like to welcome incoming council member Vivian Joyner. We are rooting for her, and I'd like to personally extend my support and help in serving South Ward and the greater Winston-Salem. But tonight, I'm here as a resident of West Salem. Our Neighborhood Association has been reinvigorated through the leadership of a great group of committed residents, and we're working with the city on a number of initiatives, namely parks, traffic, and public safety, and several other residents are here tonight. The city's been super responsive to our requests, and we're working closely with several departments. I'd like to thank a couple of people at the city. Renata Owens, who is the Assistant Recreation Director, Jeff Fanzler, Director of the DOT, and Aaron King, Assistant City Manager. I've been working directly with these folks, and I appreciate their help. Two things I'd like y'all's help with tonight is, first, getting the Granville Park project over the finish line. It's taken quite a while, it's still technically closed, and there's some liability safety issues still outstanding. And then, secondly, requesting more police presence at Granville Park. A few weeks ago, we tragically had a 19-year-old kid murdered at like 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. on a Friday night. Having a patrol car just show up in the parking lot once a night to do their paperwork or whatever would be a pretty small step that would help make our neighbors feel much more comfortable and safe. So thanks for all your continued diligence, and thanks especially to the three of you that are stepping off the council. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll close the public comment period. So we have on our agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by several people, Councilmember Taylor believes. All opposed in favor of adjourned, please say aye. Anyone opposed, we adjourn. Anyone opposed, we adjourn.